I would like to make a statement to the county tonight. Thank you for all the blessings that you provided us in this great city. We ask that you put your call in hand on this honor that I have given to people of this city. At the same time, I want you to hear that we constantly keep in mind those people put harm's way over in the justice district and this country. We would all then help them all, please say, identify a resolution to this town. I ask for all this in your sons' name. Amen.
Amen. Let the citizens do the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe we have some leadership lives. Do you participate in the police stand? Go ahead. This is probably the last meeting that the developers could attend. Are there any of the developers here who would be interested in that? All right, so move on to have two minutes for approval. The council has time to review the minutes from the set of seven special government meetings on February twenty first, one going through regular meeting. Council, are there any additions or revisions to this? Is there a group confirmation? Minutes from the October fifth, twenty twenty three regular meeting. I have three bits.
The truth. I'd make consideration of a request to purchase an automated fingerprint identification system, and it's an upgrade for the city of Valdosta Criminal Laboratories. Police Chief Leslie Mannahan will present. Hi, Chief.
Hey. Thank you, Mayor and Council, City Manager. I'm coming forward tonight to ask to request to move forward with the purchase of a upgraded automated fingerprint identification software system, AFIS system. Our Crown Lab uses this AFIS system, and it's maintained by the GBI, and it's used on a criminal level where if evidence is collected at a scene of a fingerprint, it's run through the system, and it's a GBI database. In saying that, the GBI determines what software system is being used. And currently, we're using the NEC Corporation, and the last revision was in 2010. Well, it's time. It's lived its life, so NEC Corporation has come out with a new upgraded, better version, and anyone who's using the AFIS system now must go to that version by December first. Unfortunately, we just found out about it earlier this month, so it was not budgeted for, but the Crown Lab has gone through their budget, and they have located $12,470 that was improved in FY24 that they are able to put towards this system. The total price is $44,600, so the remaining, I've got with the finance director, the remaining $32,130 will have to come from current revenues. So we're asking to move forward, that you allow us to move forward with the purchase of the AFIS upgrade for $44,600 with NEC Corporation.
Council, any questions for Chief? Chief, thank you. Council, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, may I motion we approve this request as presented?
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Motion carries. Council, thank you. Item B, consideration of a request to purchase new body armor for the tactical operations unit at the Valdosta Police Department. Again, our chief to present.
Thank you again. The members of our tactical operations unit, RTOU, is what we call them, they respond to high-risk situations such as armed barricaded subjects, high-risk search warrants, and any other situation that we need specially equipped and specially trained personnel. Due to the type of situations that we ask of them to respond to, they do require a higher level of protective gear, and the lifespan of all of our body armor is five years. The current body armor that our TCU members are wearing was purchased in 2018, so it does expire at the end of this year. So when the body armor, it does expire, they will not meet the regulations that are set forth by the National Institute of Justice, who governs the safety equipment for law enforcement. But not to mention, we want the best out there for our people to try to keep them safe. So we did receive three quotes, and our tactical team did try out all of the gear. The lowest bid was from Verco Materials LLC that came in for $51,181.50 for FY24. Council has approved $62,000 in budget, so we're coming in under budget, and we're requesting to move forward with this purchase.
Any questions for Chief on the body armor?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
I know we normally go with the lowest bid.
Yes, sir.
But you said you wanted us with the best idea. Is that what you recommend with this one?
They tried, they tried all of this on, and they're very happy with, with it. Yes, sir. Thank you for asking that.
Good question, Earl.
What's the difference in them? I'm just curious.
The difference in what they're looking at now, it's kind of like an alligator scale with, with the metal or with the, with the protective gear, and this one, they can actually recycle, and it'll be cheaper, five years from now, somebody coming before you, it could be cheaper because they can recycle those, those vests. But it's a neat little, it almost looks like scales. It's really neat.
All right, cool.
Any further questions for Chief? Chief, thank you. Council, again, it's yours for action.
May I make a motion that we approve the request presented by Chief?
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Motion carries. Move on to item C, consideration of a request to approve a proposal and consulting contract for services to perform a historic resource survey of the south side area of the city of Valdosta. Jeff Bremer to present.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of council. As you see in your packets, this is a request to execute a contract for historic resource survey of the south side area of Valdosta. This includes an area of about 1,100 parcels, south of Savannah Avenue, down to Old Clyattville Road, and I think Oak, north or South Oak Street is the western boundary on to, yeah, Griffin, I guess, well, yeah, going up on the east. You remember, we recently completed phases one and two of a local historic, historic district survey. Now, this is the next phase in identifying and documenting historic resource, resources in the city. Earlier this year, council approved a resolution to spend as much as $60,000 on a survey of this area. Since then, the city has secured $25,000 in grant funding from the state to help offset the cost. The city issued an RFP last month. We received one bid, and as you can see, the cost was a little bit lower than what we were anticipating. Furthermore, the firm that did respond with the proposal was the one that did phase one of the historic district survey a few years ago. HPC was very pleased with their product. The state was also very pleased. So based on council already approving the resolution earlier, and HPC's recommendation to accept the proposal, our recommendation is to, to approve the expenditure. So I'll take any questions.
Council, any questions for Jeff?
Have you talked to the community in this area? Did you talk to the residents? You just drove by, used to let them, what you thought was extraordinary?
Well, no, we haven't, we haven't done the survey yet. I mean, what we did is we-
When you do the survey, are you doing, are you seeing some of the council, some of the citizens that live in the neighborhood?
Oh, well, absolutely. They won't be part of the survey, and this will be a windshield survey, so basically they'll drive by, they'll document, you know, all the parcels, what's there, what's the style of the building, what is the approximate age? And it's basically a fact-finding mission to see what is still there. A lot of this area was surveyed about 20 years ago. However, there's been a lot of change in the area since then. I don't want to get too far off in the weeds, but it was placed on the national register. Of course, that's different than the local district and, you know, as far as ordinance and protections and stuff like that. But to answer your question, yes, the, the local community will be part of whatever action is taken based on what is found in this, this windshield survey, whether they want to come and expand the district, whether they want to offer certain recognition for individual properties. We already have some of that in our ordinance that can be done. But this is basically, you know, a contract to hire a professional firm that does this, an architectural, cultural, resource, historic firm, to go in, survey what is still there, compare it to the documentation and the reports that were made in 2004, 2005, see how things have changed, and then use this as a basis for, you know, for future planning, whether they want to expand the district, whether, you know, they want to offer protections to certain properties. Basically, this gives us an idea of, of what is there, how things have changed in the last 20 years.
I just, I mean, I just don't want you to leave back to citizens because they are the ones that live in the areas, and plus, it's a lot of history that I do feel that if we can do something to expand it or upgrade it or et cetera, but I do want the citizens included in this.
To answer that, citizens will have to be included. It will have to be a community-led effort to do things like expand the district or, you know, recognize and protect individual properties. It would, it, it wouldn't work, you know, if it were a top-down effort from the state and, you know, the local, the local jurisdiction to do that. It would have to be a community-led effort.
Sorry. And this will be possible through the media and the rest of the social media, everything, so the citizens would know when it starts.
Oh, yes, absolutely. We would release information to the media as far as the process for the survey, and then after we've collected everything, this will take a while. It'll be about February 2025, I think, is when the reports will all be done. But at that time, whatever action the community wants to take or individuals would like to take, the community, it'll have to be a community-led effort. And any of that, you know, expansion and stuff will have to come before council and be approved, and, you know, that'll be a whole separate process.
Thank you.
Jeff, if you don't mind, I think I want to recognize Matt because obviously he was-
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something because this could turn into a multi-step process. What you have before you tonight is simply step one. This is for survey work of the properties. It is not survey of the property owners or the citizens in that area to gauge whether they want to be included in historic district. That is a step that will come much later. This is just to gather information from, for the properties themselves, whether they're historic or not.
But even if you gather information from the survey, you still should include the people that live in the area. If you survey the area-
Well, the survey is about the properties, not the people. The surveyors doing this work may look for more other sources of information about the properties, and I know from phases one and two, they did talk with a few people that they didn't encounter, just to get some other information. So I anticipate that to be happening.
Correct.
But the emphasis is on the properties, not the will of the property owners in there just yet.
So, I have one more question. You say you're going to go out there and survey. Do we have a listed, I know he names the areas, so we will, we will see the listing that you're going into the survey?
Right. In your packet, there is this map, which is the survey boundaries.
I did see some in my district, I'm not asking.
Correct. If you look at the map, there is the shaded area in green. That's the south side national register district. All of that was surveyed 17 years ago with the national register listing, so all of that data is 17 years old. There was a generalized survey of the whole community 21 years ago. That's very much how we date. So we had to delineate an area for this survey, so we wanted to include all of the national register district, plus an area around, just to make sure we catch the fringe areas, and being cognizant of not getting too big of an area. We were already pushing the limits at over 1,100, which is larger than anything we've surveyed before, so we were worried about that.
Because I didn't know when Mr. Horton was here, he promised to take myself and come and tell you, arrive with him, and he was doing that survey so we could get an idea of how he was placing what area he should be surveyed.
Correct, and that was for the national register and also a driving tour of that district.
Would you ever got a chance to see?
I'd be happy to show you the, the boundaries of this, yeah, certainly.
You know, the driving tour for that area already exists, and that's a marvelous tour to take.
He took himself last time, he showed us, he didn't. He, he got, you know, he moved up and going back, so he didn't.
Well, I think we could schedule something.
I'd be happy to show you, but basically, as you said, everything inside that map and those boundaries will be surveyed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Jeff or Matt? Gentlemen, thank you. Council, it's yours for action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve this request as presented.
Second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands.
Favor.
Council, thank you. Motion carries. We'll move on to item D, consideration of intergovernmental agreement with the Valdosta Lowndes County Industrial Authority and commitment letter to the EDA for infrastructure improvements for a new Walmart manufacturing project. Before us has been O'Donnell, our city engineer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I'm sure you all are well aware of this project. It's been very well publicized. We've been in discussions for this project for many, many months. It's known formally as Project Forge, which we now know to be a Walmart manufacturing facility, which is going to bring hundreds of jobs to the area, to great benefit to our community. This particular agenda item is for your consideration of the IGA, the intergovernmental agreement with the Development Authority, as well as your consideration of the commitment letter to be signed in conjunction with the application for the EDA grant. I have done my best to load this packet with as much information as possible. I've included, I'm sure you guys have seen all the pages, but I was going to print all of it, but it's quite a bit. I've included the PER, which is the preliminary engineering report, which was required to be commissioned for the EDA grant application, which basically lays out the scope of the work, as well as the associated funding, instruments, costs associated with the project, estimated preliminary costs. In any case, the city has agreed to fund and support this project with a commitment of $6 million. A portion of that, as detailed in the agenda item, is for matching funds for this EDA grant. The EDA grant's commitment letter is also included. The draft copy is included in the agenda item. There is a late edition of an additional exhibit, which is Exhibit B, in the draft commitment letter, which details the nature of the payment. The language in that commitment agenda, or the appendix B, the language in that appendix is intentionally vague while being direct, such that we can have some flexibility with how that funding is, is due to the Development Authority, but it's very clear in, in the, in the terms of it. I can go through each one of those if you have questions. I can go through the economics of the decision. I can go through, I can go any direction that you'd like if you have any questions for me, but I'm just here to, to serve y'all, so.
Council, any questions for Ben? Ben, very thorough.
Yeah. Any other questions at all? Thank you. Take time.
Council, it's a big one. It's yours for action.
Chief.
Mayor, I'd like to make a, wait, wait.
I'd like to propose to approve the request of the EDA.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Council, thank you. Ben, thank you. Item D, consideration of an intergovernmental agreement with the Valdosta Lowndes County, oh, sorry. I knew it was another agreement. Consideration of an agreement for governmental affairs representation for the city of Valdosta. City Manager Richard Hardy will present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a consideration to establish a governmental affairs representative for the city. Coleman Tally Strategies serves as a governmental affairs consultant and provides representation for municipalities and counties in the state of Georgia. The overall scope of the work is to collaborate in the development of governmental affairs strategies for the state of Georgia and for the Georgia congressional delegation. Mr. John Crawford is the principal consultant for Coleman Tally Strategies and will manage the delivery of all services to the city. John is a recognized governmental affairs professional with more than 20 years of experience. He is a skilled relationship builder with a track record of delivering results. Coleman Tally Strategies continues to build relationships with key legislators and executive leadership, and they will work with the city of Valdosta to implement a public policy agenda and communicate directly with the members of the General Assembly. They will develop a well-planned strategy to educate and influence the opinions of government leaders. The proposed monthly fee will be $4,000 per month. You can see all the details in the attached agreement. The terms of this agreement will run from November the first, 2023, through October the 31st, 2024, and either party may terminate the agreement without cause, with a 30-day notice. Staff recommends council approve agreement with Coleman Tally Strategies. Prepare to answer any questions.
Any questions for Richard?
Just, just for clarification for the citizens, Coleman Tally Strategies is a totally separate entity from Coley-Tally attorneys-at-law. Who is the city's attorney?
Thank you. Any other, any other questions? Yes?
Just an example of some of the services that we'll receive, like real world.
Just like right now, we have some issues going on with the movement of our coordinating and communicating with FEMA and GMA. You know, these individuals will be able to directly speak with members in the General Assembly on the issues that we're having, moving along these grants, making contact. Any issues that we feel that's important, that represent the city of Valdosta, that needs, that needs to be pushed along, to be moved forward?
Grant, grant funding. If there is some excess money floating out there, and they catch wind of it in the, in the course of that four-month, three-and-a-half-month session, they're, they're quick to call, so that's, that's the services they offer. They're eyes and ears because they're up in the hall every single, every single day, four days a week.
So it'd be pretty easy to get a, a report at the end of the year on?
Oh, absolutely. Weekly, matter of fact.
Weekly?
Yep, we'll, we'll get it weekly.
Any other questions for Richard? Council, it's yours for action.
May I make a motion to approve the agreement with Coleman Tally Strategies LLC?
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Council, thank you. Richard, thank you. We're brought to item four, local funding and request, consideration of a request to donate property located at 23237 and a half Weizenbaker Lane to the Valdosta Lowndes County Land Bank Authority and Nitra Riley. Our fantastic neighborhood development and community protection manager will present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I come before you for a request for consideration for the donation of 337 and a half Weizenbaker Lane. Eric Thomas, the executive director for Land Bank, contacted the city, seeking the donation. The property is tax-exempt. They want to be able to donate the property or sell the property to add it back to the tax roll. Staff is recommending that we approve this donation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions for Nitra? Nitra, thank you.
I just want to really understand what you're saying. You're going to donate this property to the Land Bank so the Land Bank can hopefully put something on that property, is that what you're saying?
Yes, they receive proposals for that property.
So we will be, so the Land Bank will be able to sell it to the citizens if they wish to build a home or something in there?
That's correct.
I, I just want you to verify for the citizens that I'm saying-
That's right. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Nitra?
What's the value of that parcel?
Council, any other questions? Nitra, thank you. Council, it's yours for action.
May I make a motion to approve the request as stated?
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Council, thank you. And Nitra, thank you. Now move on to the citizens to be heard portion of the evening. We ask that you come forward and state your name and address so we may have it for the record. Our policy requires that you stay under three minutes so that others have time to be heard. Please direct all comments to council as a whole. Please do not attempt to engage individual members of council in debate. It's our policy to follow through almost immediately on your concern. Additionally, we ask that any groups that want to address the council designate one spokesperson to represent the group in their comments, so again, to ensure that all have time to be heard. With that being said, any citizens to be heard this evening.
Hello, Mayor and Council.
Hi.
My name is Vaughn Shipman. I live at 3312 Britten Drive. Been there for 25 years, so it's a nice subdivision. I had a good experience today with the engineering department. Some of my neighbors always called me when there's something that they want to check out, so I took advantage of talking to Angela Bray, and I think everything's looking good on the situation, so I want to congratulate you, and also thank you for your leadership during the storm preparation, recovery, and all the city staff that worked and continues to work to make our city bring it back as close as possible. Well, I really wanted to come to that and reflect that 20 years ago today, we opened the Traffic Management Center. Yeah, I don't know, probably running around, some of you are. That was quite a big step. We were only one of few TMZs in the state, certainly one our size for our community. But the council had foresight and supported us as we made the decision to move forward with that, and Jimmy Rainwater and the council at the time, he passed away right before we opened it, so he never got to see it. But I'm also proud with the city staff of taking that infancy of a project, and while we grew it until I retired in 2010, it has continued to improve. I'm very thankful for the insight, foresight, and the support that you all give for long-range projects. Sometimes things, you don't get an immediate return on your investment, but I think we all see that the traffic flow with the technology has allowed us to get places better, faster, more efficiently, while accidents continue to decline with the excellent work of the police department. So that's why I came. No complaints. Just wanted to thank you all. It's a, it was a good day 20 years ago, and it's a good day today.
Vaughn, you said you were at 3312, where?
Britten.
You're an engineer here, didn't you?
I should do that. City engineer.
You got the hair and everything, you got me wrong.
Well, I'm trying to chill. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time?
How y'all doing?
Good, how's it going? Anthony Fodge. I live at 2104 Penno Circle. My one individual's house had flooded during the hurricane, but that was actually the third time my house flooded, and I live right by a trench that the water tries to flow through, and I know the engineer, when I came here last time, he said that there was something in place for a retention pond near the fire station on Park in the next physical year. The other day, a couple of guys came from the city to clean it up a little bit. They had tractors, saws, and everything, and they packed up two minutes later and left. So I called the city and spoke with a young lady, and she said they left because she told them to, they had to finish something they didn't finish a day before or something, and never came back. But they had a little bit over there helps, you know, and she, I asked her about the retention pond, and she stated that, yeah, it's probably going to be two years from now or two and a half years from now. So is it the next physical year? Is it two years from now? Because it's really needed over there. I know a lot of guys didn't see the pictures or whatever, but my house had 20 inches of water inside, and my next-door neighbor didn't have a drop, and we share a fence. So the retention pond is really needed, so is it next physical year or is it two years from now? I'm just wondering when is it going to happen? I just-
Fair enough. If you'll hang around after the meeting, we'll come right back to you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Anthony Fodge, right.
Thank you, Anthony. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm John Robinson, 337 San Juan Circle, 8th Park. I'm here tonight, I'm sorry, I'm- I'm here tonight, I saw that you voted in, the deal with the historic resource survey. Kind of like throwing out the basketball of the child before you baby the child. What I mean by that is that it took this many years, 40-something years, to recognize that you don't even know what's been taking place in the city within a polished people. It's time for us to make the changes here. We met with the Department of Transportation this afternoon, and we discussed measures pertaining to the St. Augustine project, and we want to see and recognize the harm that has been done to the city and the people of the city. We are looking to move forward with things that we've been discussing with you guys, and we're looking forward to make it very progressive, and we're going to be aggressive with what we are doing and going to be aggressive in what we are putting our efforts into doing. With the D O T this afternoon, we discussed the T-spots, and we want to see if we can get T-spots on the ballot here, so that if you can build a bridge for $70 million, $75 or $80 million, why can't you use T-spots to sustain the community, once you put the bridge in and then destroy it, as the overbaked past did in 1981? We asking that, even from the ballot here for T-spots, for revitalization of support programs, such as revolving loan funds, training facilities, teach people trades, we get out, it's gonna take time. So for example, if you go broaden Barack Obama Boulevard, there's $30 million involved in that, calling T-spots, that same ethic can be used to, for restoration and revitalizing the city. And taxpayers can put money in, but they can get something back out of it, instead of just pavement, sidewalk. People out here is suffering from lack of food. When there's too many service on weekends, it's hard dinners for the people that come by from all the food bank deal, it'd be a line of cars, that's a signal that something is very wrong here, that there's too many people that are in line to get food. When the food banks open up, there's too many people going there to get food. That's a sign that something is very wrong here. I believe the T-spots can help change that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time?
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Pastor Darren Neal, Provo, Bendup Lake CP, 1587 Baytree Road. There's a mention that has been spoken of extensively over the past seven months. There's construction that has occurred just south of Fry, Cypress Road Street, south of Hudson Dockett, just on the other side of Pottville. Without any shadow of a doubt, it is a major, major, major situation in which it makes your vehicles can't arrive in that particular section of town. Both sides are blocked off. Construction has not occurred in that spot, and I can't tell you when. We started July 10th, and here we are, almost approaching November, and what should be a basic refortification of the bridge has turned into a project that's at a complete standstill. There's no way for EMS to get in, there's no way, the church folk can't go to church in that area. It is an age-old rhetorical situation where the black community is completely undeserved. We are here to hopefully gain some attention in that area, someone will focus on that bridge, or someone will focus on the construction, if they can hurry it up, if they can give us a reason as to why it's still standing still, I can just imagine why you have private contractors that you bid, that bid out on those jobs, and you had their mercy, depending upon whether they decided to get the work done. But now it's time for the city to talk to whoever's in charge of engineering and talk to whoever's in charge of that project and get it moved. This would not have sat still in any other neighborhood, and it's just so disturbing for me to see the same backhoe and grater sitting in the middle of the road and has not been touched. I purposely, I coached football in that area, and I go over there every day and I check the location of that, 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 that backhoe, and it's sitting in the same spot, and it's been sitting there for weeks and months, and no one's moved it. There's no traffic that can flow through, no one can, no one can get in or out other than to go around, completely around the neighborhood, and I just can't seem to see why it takes this much outcry for someone to finally say, hey, we're still fighting in the black community for sidewalks, streetlights, and just base it on assumptions that every other neighborhood has. And as soon as we've had this conversation before, that the spending, 250 million spent in the white community and wealthy communities and less than 2 million spent in the black communities, and year after year, I believe that the deficit's been courted by the mis-spending we need to fix this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Any other citizens wishing to be heard? Hello, George.
I'm David Washington, 5024 Drive by Ross to Georgia. Mr. Mayor and Council, last meeting, I talked about how we treat citizens in the, I travel the state of Georgia and how some cities have been fined up to $45,000 for not being consistent in how citizens address this couch. Last meeting, Senator Page referred to me that they disagreed with me. I have no problem with that, but I feel you, Councilman, that it is indeed a disgrace in my most humble opinion, for a citizen that stands before you, he cannot be listened to by you, and you don't respond to them until after we take our seat, and you come back and make comments about a citizen, and that citizen is not given an opportunity to respond to you, that's disrespectful. You shouldn't do your own children that way, and the council can change the law, because I think in other cities, it don't operate like that. I also noted through the last meeting, someone added two minutes to my point. Not a single one of you councilmen said nothing. You sat there, and one more son of a bion, you're giving up your power. You're giving up your power, as I've seen down in other cities. There's no way some of those things in another city would sit there and demand to, can I get a minute to give him two minutes? And you all don't approve it, or some of you don't agree with, you all got far, and in some cases, it does not grant it. I love our government, I don't like this tutorial type government. I couldn't make this up in my opinion, because I was taking a sitter and I related about that bridge situation, and that may fail tonight, but I will be back to finish it. When the people came, and all the time, since someone disagreed with what I said at the last meeting, the people that came and volunteered to help Valdosta, they was at Scott Park, and I listened to part of that actually, and knew people working to help us, and they couldn't even use the bathroom. And I told them I might have to talk before my plan from the mayor, and embarrass them all over the people. I was so sorry. I liked the powerful energy around, but the man's going too embarrassing, and I'm not supposed to, but I could have. So I just wanted to say to you all, the council, don't give away your power. Stand up and be heard, after all, that's why I invited you there, to say something, not just to be a smiling man. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, George. Anybody else? Any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Seeing none, we'll end up forcer the evening and turn it over to the city manager for the city manager's report.
Yes, Mayor, we have a lot going on within the next week, two weeks. Invite everyone out tomorrow to our Love Your, Love Your River cleanup. We are working side by side with Louans County to clean up Sugar Creek and the One Mile Branch. The meeting location is Drexel Park, meeting at 10:00 a.m., and it will run from 10:00 a.m. to noon. October the 26th, Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., city staff will be reading to W G Nun and J L Lomax, so if you want to participate in that, contact our public information office. On October the 26th, Thursday, we will have our annual, fourth annual festival at Unity Park from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m., and invite everyone from the community to come out, bring your, bring your families, come out and enjoy that. We will have booths that will be giving candy away, and we will also have food trucks on that evening. On October the 27th, Friday, 5:30, downtown will be celebrating with the richest night out. Again, opportunity to celebrate, come out and have some fun downtown, dress up in your best rich attire and explore downtown. Merchants will be offering a variety of incentives throughout with what we call punch cards. Our last item, which I enjoyed the last one, November the 2nd, 7:45 to 9:15, coffee and conversation with the city managers. This will take place at Just Love Coffee, 1733 Gronto, Suite 101C. That's all I have.
Richard, thank you. Move on to council comments. Counsel, do you have any comments to add tonight?
I have one.
Eric?
I wanted to go back on to something that we talked about before. Every meeting, we approve a lot of money for equipment for our city to be able to do the jobs that we do, but our citizens ask for simple things like a sign that says, slow down children playing on speed bumps, and we're telling them no. And I think we're doing a disservice to them and to us when we don't provide them with simple things like that. I mean, we all live in districts, we can't be on all of those streets, so the citizens are calling us, asking us for those things, and all we're doing is relating it to the people who can make the decision. So something simple like putting a sign up, people don't want to hear signs don't work. People want to see a sign put up. People want to see a littering sign put up. They're asking for it. We have the signs, put them up, help the people with the speed bump. That's all they're asking for, they're not asking for anything major. So I think until we start listening to these citizens, we need to start letting some of these people ride around with trucks with air, no air conditioning. Let's not approve all this stuff. I mean, we, we got to start listening to the people who put us in these seats.
Eric, thank you. Thomas?
To expand on that, before I was elected, one of the main requests I had was about the speeds in the neighborhood, and the thing about the speeding is, I know one thing is, the speed limits are not regulated by the city. Once it's 35, it's 35. But our streets are very dynamic with the people that live there. For instance, on Moon Street in District 3, on this side of the street, a young lady moved in with kids under 10 years old, four of them. Directly across from her, another young lady moved in with three kids, all under 10. So that's seven kids playing on that small street. So I said, let me see if I can drive 35 miles an hour down this street. I couldn't even get to 30 in good conscience. We have 10 of those speed bumps that cost, I believe, $250 a speed bump that we can put in places in situations like that when they wear down. If the conditions change, we don't put the speed bumps back down. The other problem I noticed is with the calculations that we use for determining whether or not the conditions, how fast the cars are going, it's a, it actually warrants speed bumps. So you have to have a certain amount of vehicles traveling at a certain amount of speed that goes over the 85th percentile. If you calculate all the time in a 24-hour period, most of those hours have no cars, but if you factor that into an average to get a mean, it sullies the waters, and this is why 95% of all the tests pass. So we need to take another look at how we determine whether or not they're speeding. Not to mention that the average person knows that those two little strips in the street are for speeding, and they slow down. So I agree with Councilman Howard that this is low-hanging fruit, and I've even had citizens to where I'm trying to follow the rules, and they have gone door to door getting signatures, got it notarized, got it turned in, and here we are, months down the line, no response. No response. So the citizens are getting very frustrated that when I say no, this is the process that you have to do in order to get speed bumps in your community, and they follow the process and come to me, and I turn it in, and I don't get a response, and they don't either. So that's a whole nother layer of a problem with the speeding. So I would like Mayor Council to take this speeding very seriously. Thank you.
Councilman, thank you. Any other council comments?
This is not nothing concerning you guys. I did something today. I'm not the best cook, and all y'all already know that. I was cooking in the kitchen, and fire alarm went off, and I couldn't stop it. I forgot my passcode, and five, Miss A D T called, and by the time she called, the alarm had went off, and I'm telling you, because they're gonna tell, tell on me to you.
Already got it.
So fire truck came, and I tried to stop them. This, this, I called Miss A D T, she tried to stop, but they still came, and I'm so embarrassed, but they did do a good job. So I want to say to Chief Botwell, his firemen were on point for coming to put the fire at my house for a person that can't cook, but don't laugh at them guys, I was trying. Thank you, Chief, for.
Don't make me bang the gavel, chief.
Did they eat the food?
Well, Mr. Williams is gonna ask, Mr. Mayor, did you feed the guys?
Miss A D T told me to, she said, would it take you an hour to finish what you're doing? I said, yes. She said, well, I'm gonna tell them, give you an hour, but they still came. But I just wanted to say, I'm sorry, our city manager and the Chief Botwell, please forgive me. It was just a mistake, sir.
Any other council comments this evening? Hearing none? Nope. May I make a motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor, show hands. Counsel, thank you.